I wish we endorse in this chamber, Father, please protect all of our city employees, and we ask a special blessing for those who may be affected by the honorable and help crisis. We ask this blessing to the extended councilman Ken Hussey, who is recovering from recent surgery. Dear God, bless the citizens of our nation, and grant that we may be united as one nation of free people under God. This we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll now call to order the Tuesday, September 8, 2020, City Council Meeting. For those that would like to call in, participation is available at the phone number of (404) 397-1516. The meeting number is (146) 096-4157, and the password is 2020. And this agenda is found on JeffersonCityMo.gov. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Vote.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have a special honor tonight to recognize Officer Jeremy Bowman for his statewide FOP Award. And at this time, I'd like to ask Officer Bowman, along with Detective Jason Ambler, to come to the podium and tell us about this award. And when I learned about it, I was very impressed and honored, and wanted to take a moment to recognize your award here in council chambers. So, welcome.
Good evening. Recently, Officer Bowman attended the biannual Missouri State Fraternal Order of Police Conference that was held in Branson. The Jefferson City Police Officers Association is one of 28 lodges in the state of Missouri. Of those 28 lodges, there's about 8,000 Missouri members and over 333,000 officers nationwide. At the conference, Officer Bowman was awarded the Missouri Fraternal Order of Police Officer of the Year, and he was also elected to the Missouri State FOP Executive Board as the Sergeant-at-Arms. That's for a two-year period. In addition to being the Member of the Year and a State Board Appointment, Officer Bowman has been an intricate part in addressing compression and retention issues on a local level, which we all know about. Officer Bowman has also been invited this year to multiple political venues. He was tasked with representing the Missouri Fraternal Order of Police at one of Governor Parsons' daily COVID meetings. He was also invited recently as a member of the Missouri Fraternal Order of Police Executive Board to attend the acceptance speech of President Trump at the White House. Where are you at?
Right.
It's a pleasure to call him a friend, a coworker, and most importantly, a leader. On behalf of the Missouri Lodge 19 E-Board and all of our members, we thank you. It seems that "thank you" is not enough, but until we can squeeze chief season tickets out, that's going to have to do. His goal-oriented ambitions and focused task approach is an asset not only to the members of the FOP, but the city in a whole, and this award and appointment is well deserved. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Officer Bowman, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, a couple of things I want to say. I wanted to prepare a speech, but I thought when you prepare something, it doesn't come straight from the heart. So I wanted to say a couple of things, straight from the heart. One, this award, which I'm blessed to have won, I'm not very good with personal accolades. This isn't mine. This is split in half, and half of it goes to my executive board because you're only as good as the people around you. So I'd like to thank Executive Vice Jason Ambler, Chaplain John Kempker, Trustee John Lehman, Second Vice Cody Schuler, I was going in order, Treasurer Steve Weaver, and Secretary Kirk back there. They're actually the ones that make me look good. So if there's any round of applause at the end, it actually goes to them. The second half of that award goes to my glowing pregnant wife back there and my beautiful daughter. They're the ones that put up with me when I stay up late at night at the computer or miss dinner to go to functions or whatnot. So really, they're the ones that deserve everything. It's not me. While I'm blessed to be here, I appreciate it. You know, being a police officer in Jefferson City, it's unique when you have a group of people that are willing to give the ultimate sacrifice for their community. When you combine that with a group like the Fraternal Order of Police where they're willing to give the ultimate sacrifice for each other, that creates a pretty dynamic group for the community. And it's just not the salary stuff we've been working on. It's what we do for the community with the Shop With The Cop. She's my biggest fan. Sorry. Come here, kiddo.
It's all right. Eyes up. That's right.
Can you say hi? Okay. There you go. It's the money we raise for Shop With The Cop and those kids that don't get presents at Christmas. It's for working with the fire union to raise $11,000 for Safety Net through our charity hockey game. Safety Net is for families of loved ones that are killed in the line of duty and the sacrifices that they have to make once they lose their loved ones. So it's what we do for the community. It's what we do for each other. I'm blessed to stand up here, very thankful. But any round of applause, please go to the back of the room because it's for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Bowman. It is an honor to have you here and for you to receive this award. The way you represent every officer in the department, this is something that we're very proud of, and it reflects on all of us. It reflects on the city of Jefferson and certainly reflects on our police department. So please accept our gratitude for what you've done and appreciation for you winning this award. And we're very happy to invite you here. After hearing that you went to the White House, I know this was probably not quite as good, but also we wanted to take a moment to share in this and also get the word out about how proud we are about you and this recognition. And then, does council have anything to add before we do a presentation and picture?
I just want to say real quick, job well done, very well deserved. Instead of chief tickets, I'm going to give you some 49ers tickets. So we go to the 49ers game together. Right, Jason?
You can get those local five and dime.
family and your daughter. She was entertaining us before the council meeting started, and All right. I've totally lost control of the meeting again, I think, but we're very such a sweetheart. We're also glad to have Zim from the Capitol Police here as well. proud of you. And I know I speak for the entire council and the city of Jefferson. So So we appreciate you being present for this, too. So congratulations again, and thank we appreciate you. And I do have a city coin that I would also like to present as well. you. All right. And the next item is item five, public hearings. We have none this evening. So I would invite you, and we appreciate having Monica and your daughter here. So y'all are welcome to come forward. And then also, all of our police officers that are present, if they would like to come forward as well, and we'll take some pictures.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Item six, appointments by the mayor. Gail, Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. We have a couple of appointments this evening. To the Board of Adjustment, a full term to Jay Seaver, and then alternate positions to Sharon Keating, Adam Cartwright, and Roy Michael. And to the Public Transit Advisory Committee, a partial term to Ian Shadrack, and a full term to Susan McCuren. And to the Cemetery Resources Board, a partial term to Pam Rich.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests. We have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. So we invite the public to look at JeffersonCityMo.gov for all of our committee meeting schedule. Are there any committee announcements this evening? Okay. Item B, Fair Housing and Diversity Workshop. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next Monday afternoon on September 14, there will be a virtual meeting for a Fair Housing Diversity Workshop. So if you're a property manager, landlord, stakeholder in housing, or someone just interested in what's going on with fair housing and diversity, this workshop is available Zoom only. I know the flyer, and up until this afternoon, it was also an in-person workshop, but it is exclusively now a virtual workshop. You go to the city's webpage and go down the calendar for September 14 and get a link to participate in that activity.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks. Yes?
If I could just back up for Chairman Hussey. Public Works and Planning is meeting Thursday morning at 7:30 here at City Hall.
Thank you for that announcement. And item C, Census update. To remind everyone, if you have not already taken your census, to do so at census.gov. And I have a few announcements. I wanted to mention that we had the ribbon cutting for the Dunkland Street Bridge last week, and that's really wonderful to have that area open again, and the bridge is beautiful. It looks good. So thank you to staff for all the hard work on that, and also the businesses in the area for their added patience in working on that project. And I know it's a nice addition to the old Munichburg area and that ward. We had several council members in attendance. And Oktoberfest is scheduled still for Saturday, September 26, which is typically an old Munichburg event, but they are calling it Light this year, kind of like Light Beer is what they've kind of branded that. So it will not be the typical Oktoberfest, but they are still having something, and we're hoping to connect with our partner city of Minchburg, Germany, that day and somehow do something virtual. So we're working with Lieutenant David Williams on that. So we will keep you posted if we end up finding a way to virtually connect with our partner city, because originally, we had planned to be there for Oktoberfest. So that will look a little bit different this year, but that's okay. And another item is the buried cells at the state penitentiary were recently unveiled last week, and tours are beginning again. So Councilman Schreiber, do you have anything to mention on the buried cells?
Want to invite everyone, that if you haven't seen them, they are the oldest known cells at the Missouri State Penitentiary. They go back to the 1840s, and no one knew that they were buried there until they were accidentally uncovered in 1986, when we were under a court order to provide a recreation yard for some of the offenders. So it's worth seeing, and thanks to the Convention of Visor Bureau, it's been a work in progress for well over a year in partnership with the state of Missouri Facilities Management. So come on out and take a look.
Thank you, Councilman Schreiber, and I enjoyed listening to your perspective and your take on it. You can make everything there so interesting with the stories that you have there at the penitentiary. And Saturday, September 19, is the Redemption Inside The Walls concert. We typically have them here to give an announcement. So there are tickets still available. It is not inside the walls. It was originally planned, but with the construction at Housing Unit 4, they have chosen to have that at the fairgrounds again. So they are raising money for a couple of charities. And I forgot to ask Councilman Hensley if he would bring his guitar and serenade us again on it, but it's Michael W. Smith this year. So he is the entertainer. So excellent. Right. So you know what he sings? Like, one of his big songs is "Friends." Does anybody... "So a friend's a friend forever, if the Lord's the Lord of them." Doesn't anybody know this? Emily does.
I know that.
"And a friend will not say never, 'cause the welcome will not end, though it's hard to let you go. In the Father's hands we know..." Does anybody know this? "...that a lifetime's not too long to live as friends."
The disco version.
Anyway, you can go see the real Michael W. Smith on Saturday, September 19. So that'll be fun to have him here. Carlos?
He said it was so perfect.
Yeah. Carlos, you didn't back me up this time.
I know, Madam Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Next, 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 next week.
Next time. All right. So any other announcements after that? So I will mention, like I always do during my announcements, to remember to keep your distance, to follow the Cole County Health Department regulations at every meeting. I've been reading their press release, but I would ask that you go to colehealth.org and be sure to read that, post it, share it, how important that is to remember to keep our distance, maintain your six feet, stay clean and sanitized, and try to take every precaution that you have so that we can keep our regulations voluntary as they have been. So any questions? All right. Item nine, is there any Lincoln University update, Councilman Graham? Okay. We'll look forward to getting a student back eventually. Okay. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. Mrs. Donaldson, is there anyone on the line?
Is there anyone on the phone for a specific bill?
No one. No one signed up for a specific bill.
Okay. And item 11, consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced 2020-24.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC in the amount of $54,548.67 for the Fire Station Number Five pavement replacement project.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, this bill would allow us to enter into a construction contract to replace pavement at Fire Station Five that's deteriorated over time. We've tried multiple repairs over the years, and it's at the point where it just needs replacement. It would cover the areas from the roadway up to the bay doors as Phase One. It would also cover the area that crosses the Greenway Trail there at Fire Station Five. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Councilman Graham?
Just in here, I see that on the paper it has 54, but in our package it has 64. Which one is it?
The actual scope of the project was reduced as a change order with the contractor because we didn't have enough funds in building and grounds to cover the cost of the full Phase One. So they worked with us on the price for the funds that we did have available in our building and grounds line item budget.
So it is actually the 54, 548, 67?
That's correct. It is the 54.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Any other questions? 2020-25.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC in the amount of $54,548.67 for the Fire Station Number Five pavement replacement project.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, this bill would allow us to enter into a construction contract to replace pavement at Fire Station Five that's deteriorated over time. We've tried multiple repairs over the years, and it's at the point where it just needs replacement. It would cover the areas from the roadway up to the bay doors as Phase One. It would also cover the area that crosses the Greenway Trail there at Fire Station Five. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Councilman Graham?
Just in here, I see that on the paper it has 54, but in our package it has 64. Which one is it?
The actual scope of the project was reduced as a change order with the contractor because we didn't have enough funds in building and grounds to cover the cost of the full Phase One. So they worked with us on the price for the funds that we did have available in our building and grounds line item budget.
So it is actually the 54, 548, 67?
That's correct. It is the 54.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Any other questions? 2020-25.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $187,180 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2020, to October 31, 2021, reflecting consolidated planning grant funds as approved in FY 2021 Unified Planning Work Program.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is our annual grant award agreement with Mo.gov to fund the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the elements in our work program that we will be working on next year. The grant, as the clerk indicated, is $187,000. It's an 80-20 grant. The county is participating at around $9,000, and the city's contribution is $37,000 for about $230,000 altogether. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, due to timing on this issue and make sure we have enough time, I'd like to ask for suspension of the rules and go ahead and third read and act on this tonight.
Okay. We've had a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll have third reading of 2020-25.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $187,180 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2020, to October 31, 2021, reflecting consolidated planning grant funds as approved in the FY 2021 Unified Planning Work Program.
Any council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Lester? Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2020-26.
An ordinance amending Section 3-3 Alcohol, Drug, and Controlled Substance Abuse Policy, subsection M, Employee Assistance, subsection U, Testing Locations, and section V, Who to Contact of the City of Jefferson Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. So we changed our employee assistance program provider, as well as our drug and alcohol provider this year. And both of those providers are listed in our personnel policy manual, so they are available for our employees to find. And the personnel policy manual has been adopted by the council. So this is just a request to update that personnel policy manual with the updated information.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
2020-27.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, Parking Prohibited by the Addition of 30 Feet on Alpine Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, this bill would provide no parking area on Alpine Court approximately 30 feet. When folks park in that area, there is a slight sight distance problem there. It's brought to the Traffic and Transportation Commission by a resident in the area, and they've recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right. 2020-28.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule R, Reserve Parking by the Addition of Two Missouri State Capitol Police Spaces on Bolivar Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, another Traffic and Transportation Commission action forward to the council, but basically the Capitol Police and their chief is here tonight, requested some area for parking along their facility. It's on just the first area off Bolivar Street, off of Main. The first 50 feet would be reserved for Capitol Police. And this also went to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and adjacent businesses indicated they didn't really have a problem with it, as long as, you know, they would have a designated area now and wouldn't be parking in adjacent spaces.
Is there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Graham?
Based on the need of this request, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and take up the third reading tonight.
Okay. We've had a request to suspend the rules. Unless there are any objections, we will move forward with third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule R, Reserve Parking by the Addition of Two Missouri State Capitol Police Spaces on Bolivar Street.
Any discussion or deliberation? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Lester? Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. And thank you again, Chief Zim Swartz, sorry, for being here this evening. Hard to say that with a mask on, right? Thank you. 2020-29.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by Addition of Stop Signs at Diamond Ridge and on Maryland Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And as clerk indicated, another request from the Traffic and Transportation Commission forward to the council, but basically residents of these areas requested stop signs where there are currently none located. It's not uncommon in residential areas not to actually have a sign of any type. Just kind of, you know, low volume works out. People yield to one another. But in cases where we do get a request, we would go ahead and install those. And in this case, along Diamond Ridge, it's three intersections, Topaz with Diamond Ridge, Amethyst and Sardonic with Diamond Ridge would all receive stop signs. And then, and that's out on the west end of town. And then, in kind of the central area of town off Forest Hill, there's a Maryland Drive intersects with basically two or three streets, the way it's arranged, but a stop sign there as well.
Any...
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. Thank you. 2020-30.
Amending the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 2021 budget by reclassifying the Management Assistant Full-Time with Benefits Position to Program Manager, Community Equity and Inclusion Manager, Full-Time Position with Benefits within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a position we'd like to use one of our vacant positions, something we've been working on a while to enhance and do better in our inclusion programs that we do. We think this is something that we've needed for a while in our department, and so we now have the ability to do that. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? And I know at the pre-meeting, you elaborated a little more on what that position is, if you want to share some of that, too.
Well, sure. Like, we've really started focusing on some of our groups in our community that we haven't done programs enough for, scholarships for. We've started a program with the Boys and Girls Club to have teams, volleyball, football, baseball so far. So there's a lot more work that needs to be done there, a lot more kids that need to be in our programs, not only sports, but with our day camps, with our art programs, all of those things. So this will be somebody that will work directly with our current program director and really focus their efforts in the communities that we think need it the most.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Councilman Graham?
It sounds like what this is, is being intentional, and certainly, I think that this is what we need. So I'm glad to see that we are stepping up to the plate to do something. So I just want to say thank you for where we're at right now. So hopefully we can move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for being intentional.
Thank you. 2020-31.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 2.98 acres located at 2715 Route CC from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RS2 Low Density Residential.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is coming from the property owners through the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you look at the slide there, the property is located on the southwest corner of Route C and 179, about 800 feet south of the stoplight at the intersection of C and CC. The property in the hatch mark is the property requesting the rezoning. Years ago, when the property was annexed, the whole area was annexed in, the zoning of C1 was given to that property. It is a residential property with a, had a business at the time, a little print shop, copy repair shop. The property owner requested the commercial zoning so that he'd be in compliance with the zoning code. Since that time, the property to the east that's labeled C2 acquired the property to the north of the C1 property in a sliver along the east side of the C2 property, and two years ago, requested that whole area be rezoned to C2. The property owner wishes to rezone for two reasons. One is to become conforming with the zoning code so that if something happens to the house, they can rebuild and reuse it as a residential property. They also want to have the protections of a buffer yard in case of any pending development on that neighboring property. A buffer yard would be required. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval, six to zero, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. 2020-32.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adjusting the 2019, 2020 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by reallocating funds within the general fund.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you. Again, Madam Mayor, this is a bill that would allow us to utilize funds that were left over from the Fire Station Two project in FY 2019, to be utilized for rehabilitation of some longstanding facility issues at Fire Station Number Four. This would allow us to go out to bid and develop more complete design documents, and then bring that information back to the city council for future action, and then decisions to be made about prioritizing... be made about prioritizing various alternates that would be included in that proposed construction project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2020-33.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri removing helmet requirement language in regards to motorcycles and motorbikes.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill amends city code to reflect changes made by House Bill 1963, approved by the General Assembly at the previous regular session. Specifically, the new state law contains a provision stating that no political subdivision of the state shall impose a protective headgear requirement on the operator or passenger of a motorcycle or motor tricycle. So, the city currently has, does have requirements regarding helmets while riding motorcycles. And so, this bill removes those requirements to be consistent with state law. This is not something that is really optional for the city. And so, even if we did nothing on this bill, we'd still not be able to enforce these provisions of the bill. So, it is my recommendation to go ahead and remove them out of the bill to reduce any type of, to remove them out of the code, pardon me, to reduce any type of confusion or misunderstanding by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Moulman. It is unfortunate that the safety requirement has been lifted by the state, but again, I would remind those who are riding motorcycles or, that they can still wear their helmets, and they should, even though it's not a state requirement, and even though we cannot enforce that in the city. I would certainly mention that as a strong suggestion. Councilman Fitzwater?
I just wanted to make a comment. I agree. I do not agree with this law, but it is law of the state, and we are doing what we're required to do. The point I wanted to raise is, I think that group has been working in the Capitol since I've been in Jefferson City to pass this law. Persistence sometimes works, and they just found an opportunity this year to attach it to a bill that had a chance to get through and did get through. So, my point is, I mean, just keep working on issues. You know, sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not, but this group did their homework, they moved it, and, you know, they finally got the vote. So, we do what we have to do at this point.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater, and I hope that people will still continue to wear their helmets despite this. Any other comments? Okay. Item 13 bills pending 2020-18.
An ordinance amending chapter seven Boards and Commissions, Article One, Section 7-2, attendance of members of boards and commissions required of the city code.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. I laugh because I have to pull this down every time. Okay, thank you. So, this pertains to the section of the city code that refers to attendance of members at boards and commissions. So, our current language is very confusing. It's difficult to track and hard to understand. So, the recommended language is to allow a person to be replaced if they fail to attend two-thirds of the meetings occurring in any twelve-month period or three consecutive meetings. We feel that this is, this language is much clearer, easier to track, and will allow us to replace members where we sometimes have problems meeting quorums because we can't do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2020-19.
Amending the 2019-2020 budget by reclassifying the Assistant Skating Director part-time with benefits position to a Customer Service Representative, full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another position we'd like to reclassify, kind of, you know, be in business for a few years, knowing that we could use a full-time position more, not during regular hours. So, this would be an afternoon-evening type position. So, we believe this will make us better, more efficient, and better customer service. So, we're glad to bring this forward to you all.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2020-20.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission for the purpose of designing the apron maintenance project for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
I feel like we should go get a lottery ticket and play those numbers, right? Mr. Marash?
Yes, thank you. As clerk indicated, this bill and the next are companions, but the first one's a grant agreement with MoDOT. It's to design apron repairs at the airport, and it's a ninety percent federally funded grant, ten percent city. The ninety percent amounts to about a little over one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, and the city's share, which would come from the half-cent capital improvement sales tax, the allotment for airport matching is about sixteen thousand. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2020-21.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company for services associated with the apron maintenance project for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As I had just indicated as well, this is the companion bill. It would just authorize the engineering contract with Burns and McDonnell Engineering. They're the pre-qualified engineer for Jefferson City's airport projects, and the amounts I just stated for the grant agreement.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Bill passes. 2020-22.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri relating to its financial disclosure policy and conflicts of interest.
Mr. Moulman?
Ryan, are you on mute?
I'm here.
Okay.
You guys, you guys just missed about fifteen seconds of brilliance. So, this bill amends the city's ordinances related to financial disclosures and conflicts of interest. So, state law requires that if a city is to have ordinances on financial disclosures and conflicts of interest, that it must include some minimum statutory elements. In review of this section in preparation for some of our ethics obligations, we realized that some of the reporting requirements were not included within our ordinance. And so, this bill includes a new subsection G, which covers disclosure reports by elected city officials, candidates for elected office, and selected staff members. The language in this bill largely follows verbatim the language of the statute, and it should not substantially change the procedures that covered persons who currently have to file a financial closure with the Missouri Ethics Commission, should not substantially change how they do that, with the one exception of adding the city clerk as a repository for the financial disclosure in addition to the Missouri Ethics Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2020-23.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with Superior Home Improvement Team LLC.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill approves a development agreement with Superior Home Team LLC regarding property owned by the city at 813 Madison. The property at 813 Madison is owned by the city of Jefferson and is, and the city really doesn't have any overarching purpose for the property to be held at the city. We don't need it for any type of facility or anything like that. It looks like it was acquired sometime in the past as part of a, maybe a nuisance or some other type of, some other type of code-related process. Because the city really doesn't have any reason to retain ownership of this property, the owner of 811 Madison, which is next door, approached the city and asked if the city would be interested in conveying the property so that the property could be used for additional parking for the rental housing unit at 811 Madison. So, this development agreement reflects this arrangement in which the developer would take ownership of the property at 813, promises to develop it with some parking improvements. The parking improvements are fairly minor, one or two cars, not extending beyond the back property line, and would be used by the property at 811 Madison. And in fact, the agreement requires that these properties be combined into one parcel. So, we believe that this is a good way to get the property back on the tax rolls and get it back to a productive use, and also bring the property at 811 Madison kind of more equal to the properties in the immediate area in that it's one of the few properties in the area that does not have available off-street parking. So, this would provide off-street parking, maybe help some parking issues, congestion issues in the area a little bit. This agreement also includes a cash offer of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be transferred to the city. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Bill passes. Item 14, informal calendar 2020-13. Councilman Hensley, what's your desire?
Madam Mayor, I would like to remove that from the informal calendar and place it before the council for deliberation and action tonight.
Okay, thank you. And this time, I'll ask Mrs. Miller to give us an update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for the FY 21 budget. The Budget Committee has recommended the approval in the general fund for thirty-two million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the total funds, including capital projects, sixty-four million, six-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and two cents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? And I do appreciate council's hard work on this. The Budget Committee chaired by Councilman Hensley met many times and worked through some very hard decisions and choices that were made, and I think it was definitely obvious that there were things in the budget that council wanted to fund and has definitely some priorities, but also realizing, going through the pandemic and last year's tornado, some of the challenges that we're facing, too. But it was a, a lot of difficult decisions were made during those budget meetings, and I thank council and the Budget Committee and also staff for working so hard on this budget. So, any further discussion on 2020-13? Did I have Emily read that? Mrs. Donaldson, I'll let you read the bill, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2020, to October 31, 2021, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Any further discussion, questions? All right, roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vote?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 15, Resolutions RS 2020-10.
A resolution extending an emergency declaration and further proclamations thereunder until October 5, 2020.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. So, this resolution extends the emergency declaration made by the mayor back in March regarding the COVID pandemic, and also extends three proclamations thereunder. Those three proclamations relate to temporary signs, which allows for additional signage for businesses that have amended operations due to the, to the COVID pandemic. It covers electronic participation in city meetings. That allows the electronic participation at all city meetings. It also extends the proclamation requiring masks be worn at public meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Moulman. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. Do we have anyone signed up or on the line?
Mr. Wayne Elliott signed up as potentially presenting.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, if you'd like to come forward and state your name, and you have three minutes to speak on your topic. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council, my name's Wayne Elliott. I'm a concerned citizen. Just with a few questions. I had originally intended to make a short presentation regarding the Confederate monument on Monroe Drive, Clark Avenue area. And I think it's kind of irrelevant to tonight's agenda and topics, so instead, I would like to just ask for an update on your plans in that regard, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. I know that nothing has come forward yet to council. I believe it might at the next city council meeting, but I would defer to staff on that. Mr. Kroll, do you know?
Well, I'm not aware of anything, received a request for anything coming to council yet.
Okay.
I know different city committees are talking about the issue.
Yes, that's, that's as far as I know. I believe the Historic Preservation Committee or Commission has talked about that at a couple of their meetings, and the Human Relations Commission. So, is there any staff members that know, no requests have come forward to council yet that I'm aware of?
Mr. Elliott, would you like to say something in case it does come to our attention? We have received letters in support or opposition of, so what would you like to say?
Tonight, I think I'll just withhold any comment. I just wanted to kind of get a handle on that. I was under impression, maybe this meeting might feature more discussion of that topic, so I think I'll return at the next meeting, if that's all right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mrs. Donaldson, do we have anyone else signed up under item 16?
No, we don't.
Okay. Item 17, council and staff discussion this evening? All right. Item 18, any new business? Nineteen, we have a motion, is there a motion to approve the August 17, 2020 closed session minutes?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 20, closed session. Item A, we would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Mrs. Donaldson, would you read the resolution?
Pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will enter
of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss real estate, Section 610-21, Subsection 2.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we will take a five-minute break and then meet back in this room for closed session. I believe Councilman Hussey will rejoin, have to call in a different number to rejoin that. So, we will be back in five minutes. Thank you.